Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call please?
Cruz, Rep. Passy.
Yes.
Frazier.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Taylor. Mandelbaum.
Here.
Brightwood.
Here.
Cruz and Taylor, excuse me, Mr. President, you do have a quorum.
Go ahead, start with the allegiance.
Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of North America, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, if you really have a woman in the saddle, if you have a woman in the saddle for the reason for... Thank you. Thank you very much. I will let you open the public hearing with your closing. And if you will sort of queue up in each hour, then you have three minutes to speak into the mic. And once we indicate your three minutes, I would like for you to be seated, because we have quite a few people here today, and we want to allow everyone to get opportunity to speak. So, who's the first speaker? Yes, sir?
Thank you. I'm Vic Dusset, and my wife and I live on Bellwood Drive. I'm a graduate of Southfield Laker High School and have lived in Southfield since 2004. I'm a 15-year volunteer with the Miracle League of Michigan, a baseball program for special needs children with a wheelchair-accessible ball diamond at the north end of this very municipal complex. I ask the council tonight, in the strongest possible terms, to urge the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to revoke the liquor license of Bar 7, which has a long and demonstrable record of being a serious threat to public safety. It has been the scene of two shootings, a stabbing, numerous brawls, and 37 police runs. That's enough reason to deny a liquor license, but let's look at what the owners say they will do to combat the issues and the problems here tonight. Their first claim is that the bar will operate with reduced hours and stop selling alcohol at midnight. That's not a preventative measure, as violence, especially when fueled by alcohol, can occur even in warm daylight. Their second claim is that the bar will no longer use a disc jockey and no longer play rap or hip-hop. This statement is both disingenuous and racist. How music is delivered has no bearing on how people might react to it. Additionally, plaguing the music, which is primarily performed by African-Americans, as the source of the problem is straight out of a Ku Klux Klan playbook. There's nothing inherently violent about rap, hip-hop, or any other kind of music. The issue's not the music, it's the actions of the patrons of the bar and its ineffective security staff. And what about that staff? The bar owners say they will hire additional security. Why should we believe this would have the desired effect? What Bar 7 has done to this point is not kept the business, its patrons, or my neighborhood safe. Doing more of what hasn't worked and expecting a different result is the very definition of insanity. It's only through luck that the violence endemic to Bar 7 has resulted in injury and not death. The longer it remains open, the more likely the headlines will talk about fatalities and not injuries. We can't allow such a business to remain in our city, creating an atmosphere of violence and fear. We moved to Southfield because we found it a safe, vital community and a good place to live. Establishments such as Bar 7 mock our beliefs. No good can be accomplished if it continues to operate. What has happened here demonstrates a long-term systemic failure of Bar 7's ability to operate in a responsible manner. We need to put this upholstered sewer out of business before someone is killed. We invited you to handle the tough job of governing a major city. It's time for you to shoulder your responsibility and ask the Liquor Control Commission to take away Bar 7's license. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Shfley. This is my daughter Reagan. For context, on last week, I received an email from Mayor Cyler regarding the compromise being presented to City Council, and for the interest of time, I'll read my response back to his email. I have due to current compromise under consideration by City Council, and I'm deeply concerned. Specifically, the compromise which prohibits the use of a DJ that plays hip-hop or rap music appears on its face to target African-American patrons and can be seen as a racist gesture to resolve any concerns with Bar 7. The tragic events which occurred at Bar 7 are unfortunate. However, to solely attribute them to a particular genre of music, which is overwhelmingly African-American in nature, is dangerous at worst and reckless at best. Southfield, as an inclusive city, must do better than the current stereotype compromise on the table before City Council. Country music fans are not being targeted for the unfortunate events in Las Vegas, which left 58 people dead and injured 850 people. Perspective about this matter is needed, not a broad brush. As a resident, I urge the city to consider the intent versus the impact of the proposed compromise, and I hope that you take these concerns into consideration. Thank you.
I may have missed all the missions. Come on to the... Please give your name and address before you start speaking.
Sonora Leonard, 27615 Lexington Parkway, and I speak for 288 residents in the Cambridge Village subdivision. The Bar 7 has been a... The Bar 7 has a reputation for being rowdy, and it lives up to that reputation. I have a friend that went there for a birthday get-together, and when he left, his thoughts were, "This is not the place for me, and I will never come back." There's been dozens of disturbances, problems of a serious nature that require police, which is too many. The owners have had countless chances to correct these problems, but have not succeeded in doing so. The owners have used up their chances. Those actions only show a lack of respect for the community. The city of Southfield cannot afford any more of this behavior. Bar 7 is not a credit to the community, it's a dependent. Our police services are better used throughout the city, rather than Bar 7 using it all up. Southfield welcomes all businesses that are vibrant and that are a credit to the community. The fights, shootings, a stabbing, Bar 7 is not the type of business that the city of Southfield wants. It's a detriment to society, and we want no more of it. Shame on you, Bar 7 owners.
Good evening, my name is Leanne Lucas. I live at 28795 Carmel Drive, Southfield, Michigan. Let me make the first statement very clear. We want our... Out of Southfield. It makes our city look bad. We wind up in the papers and the news all over Michigan, and it's not a desirable place due to the bad publicity that it puts on our city. Thirty-seven calls to one place, anywhere in any small city, like I was a small city speaking relatively, is too much. It's too much. Secondly, I'd like an answer from whomever might... The parking at that particular place had to be okay somewhere, sometime, someplace when they opened up, and it's way too small for an entertainment facility. And finally, I represent the Green Tree Homeowners Association, and I have my neighbors with me in support. And I want to emphasize finally that I feel shame when people ask me about the city of Southfield and the reputation, the filthy reputation that we get. Thank you very much.
So, Ashaki? I'm not one of the owners of Bar 7, but I...
Your name and address.
Sorry, Ashaki, I live in... Just for hills, Michigan. I'm not one of the owners of Bar 7, but I am relatives, I'm a brother of the owner. And then my mom also has an ownership stake in the business as well. And first and foremost, I want to just... I want to explain that I understand where frustration with the establishment is. Again, I'm not an owner, but I've witnessed the pain and the struggle that this has put on our family in watching a lot of this happen. We were born and raised in Southfield. This wasn't something that we had ever expected that our establishment would turn into when we opened this 10 years ago. Nine years we've been in business that are at a liquor violation. When we opened up first, we wanted to be a community bar. This was our community. We sponsored baseball teams. We worked with different charities in and around the community to say we want to be a part of this. And over time, the crowd changed and shifted a little bit. There's a lot of reasons for it. And we put in measures, higher security, those kinds of things, that my brother can speak to more. And I understand the outrage and the frustration and the black market puts on the city from a black eye standpoint, but from our seat, it was never the intention. The changes that have been made, that have put the City Council in terms of compromise are significant. A vast majority of the bar's business is done between the hours of midnight and 2:00 AM, and that's the time where a lot of incidents happen. So, we're closing midnight, stopping selling, and that's a major impact to our bottom line, but it's what we need to do to be a safe place that we deserve. It's not something we're not taking seriously. It's not something we've ever expected or wanted to happen. It, to an extent, happened to us quickly as well. And the changes that are being put in place from our seat have already proven to show some benefits. It's been better since the latest incident. So, in that way, we really tried and knew what we could to try and go back to those roots of what we wanted to be, that Southfield, part of the community establishment. There's a lot of people here today that are regulars, that we feel are our friends. We've been to their weddings. We've been around them for years and years and years, through family members, that that's always what our intent was when we opened 10 years ago. So, thank you.
All right, we would... Please keep the volume down. This is a public hearing. We want everyone to have opportunities to speak, and we'll be here for a while, and we have interruptions. We'll be here longer than we should be here. Go ahead, so your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Vern Schwartz, 2428 Lowes Lane. I've been a resident off and on my whole life, and it's disturbing to read in the newspaper where you have something that is repeated, offensive. And so, I'm opposed to continuing with the liquor license and asking to support the discontinuance of it fundamentally for two major reasons. One is just a flat-out image. You know, we have a city, and we're trying to attract people. We're a great city, and when you have something that's suppressed, that's negative like that, dangerous, it reinforces a lot of negative thoughts that people have about anything, and I think it hurts our city and it hurts us property. And, you know, you want to attract a lot of millennials. I want us to have the safest, best, and most enjoyable city. In other words, just flat-out cops. I mean, you have that many, you know, police runs, that's taking time away from other things. I mean, I had a traffic accident. I couldn't even be a police officer. So, anything that distracts from me as a citizen, I think is hurting us as a whole. So, it's a very simple message. I appreciate your time to talk, and just want to let you know that I do not want to see you continue. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Al Scully. I grew up in Southfield. I opened my first restaurant on Evergreen and Ten Mile called CK Mediterranean that is still there today four months ago.
Sir, can you give us your business address?
25148 Evergreen Road, two blocks south of City Hall.
Okay.
Three months ago, I opened up a new restaurant in Southfield again, 12 Mile and Telegraph, which is 24532 12 Mile Road, and that's right, next to Bar 7. As a business owner, I do not see how the business that has been building for 10 years could be held responsible for one person's action. The 37 police calls over 10 years, nobody's saying that. This was 10 years. 10 years that they invested their hard work, blood, sweat, and tears into the city of Southfield to open up a business in the city of Southfield. I have now opened up my second business in Southfield, and I like it, I love it. It's very pro-business. Now, we're right next door to where the incident happened, and it didn't change anything from our clientele perspective. People still visit us, and I do understand the concerns of the community, but, you know, let's state the facts. Thirty-seven months and 10 years, I mean, you know, it's a family business, you know, and they put their whole life into it, and I think you should consider removing their losses from a Southfield business owner. Thank you.
How you doing today? My name is Devani Shaki. I'm the owner of Seven Bar and Grill located at 24528 12 Mile Road. I just waited a little bit to come up, and I don't want to be the first one. I just wanted to kind of give the tone of some of the community's opinions. So, like my brother stated before, a family-owned business, opened up for 10 years. I was born and raised in Southfield, attended Southfield Public School. So, we aren't outsiders. We are from the local community. We opened up in 2008. We've been open for almost 10 years now, and we've never had a liquor control violation. We haven't had our run-ins, obviously, as you guys have seen with the police reports and Chief Hawkins' report he gave immediately after the incident that happened in December. We have acknowledged that there is an issue, and we've put a lot of precautions in place with the new security. Removing the DJs on Fridays and Saturdays, we don't need days overall together, along with... Excuse me, closing at midnight has helped dramatically. We've noticed that a lot of our problems were happening between midnight and 2:00 in the morning, so that was the common sense approach to take, even though it cuts into our business. When we opened up 10 years ago, we had a concept to be the local neighborhood sports bar, which we effectively were able to do. For the first seven, eight years we were open, we didn't have many issues. We've had great support from the local community. We have a ton of regulars, many of which are here today in our support. We sponsored softball teams, youth baseball teams, we hold golf outings. We try to get involved with the community as much as we can, because we understand how informed it is to give back when we have patrons. We want our patrons to be local. We never really wanted to cater to an outsider crowd. We wanted to be the local... We wanted to be the cheers of Southfield. That was always our goal. And for about seven, eight years, it was going great. We never had many issues, but just as of late, for whatever reason, our crowd kind of shifted. But it wasn't because of our concept change. We've always had the same DJs. We've always had the same menu. We've had the same security for eight years. The same security that was there that night when that happened has been with me for eight years. So, there wasn't a concept change, but obviously, something was changing amongst our crowd, whether we became popular with the wrong people, or regardless, whatever it was. A change had to be made on our end, and we have put those precautions into place immediately after the second incident happened on December 15th. That following day, we put the protocol into place to close at midnight. We hired a brand new security team, and we got rid of the DJs. And we've seen great results since. I would hope that you would see the support from the community with some of the people that come up here. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Darwin Moore. Currently, I live in Waterford. However, I have lived in Southfield for at least the last 10 years. I'm a patron of Bar 7, and I'm here to say that I understand the difficulties that the folks that live in the neighborhood see. I personally don't think that Bar 7 or any one entity is responsible for what is the black eye that I've heard several times here. I will piggyback on something that Dave said, and that is that Bar 7 truly is the Southfield's cheers. There are folks like myself who come in after work continuously. Been doing it for 10 years, will continue to do it, hopefully with your blessing. I don't think that removing their liquor license or anything is going to prevent if someone wants to act foolish, they're going to act foolish. I mean, it really is as simple as that. The one thing that I did notice, and I'll leave it with this, is that the majority of the incidents that have taken place in Bar 7 have been from outsiders, not from us that love the community and the people who work there. Thank you so much for your time.
How you doing? William Terry. I've lived in Southfield for over 20 years. First time I've ever been able to speak in front of the council, but I'm here in support. I don't drink, but I go to Bar 7 on a regular basis. I've gone for years. The food is delicious. The atmosphere is great, like football games. I take my children, out-of-town family guests. It's just a good place to go. I have never, in all the occasions I've been there, I've never seen any characteristics that would make me say, "I want to go back there." Now, I know there's been some incidents. I don't know why that happens, but to close down a good bar, serve the community, I would think would be doing it injustice to a place that people from Southfield, as you heard, enjoy. We enjoy the food and the atmosphere, and I think it's a benefit. I think whatever recommendations that the board gives him appears to help with the incidents that has happened in the past. I think that'll be positive, but to close them down, I think that would be wrong. Thank you.
Good evening. I don't want to restate too much, but has been said by others. My name is Marc Shels, and I am a former president of Southfield. I live in Leford Village now.
Can you give us the address of...
I'm sorry. 17573 Market Avenue in Leford Village. I'm a former resident of Southfield. I'm a retired military officer, and in the Air Force, we had a credo of honesty, integrity, character, excellence, knowing we do. I think these gentlemen represent some of those same characters, characteristics. What I don't want to do is insult anyone who has expressed the issues and or concerns that they have, because I fought in wars for people to be able to share and express in a democratic way their feelings. But I will tell you that these gentlemen, the way they treat the majority of all the patrons that I know, who are either current or retired professionals, businessmen, military, they're family, all right? They treat us like family. My whole family, from my kids, can't wait till for the Michigan, Michigan State football game, so they can go and enjoy the atmosphere at Bar 7. They supported all of my... Any of my kids' activities, from sports. My kids go to U of D Jasmine. One of the owners happens to be an alumni. He supports that. They've supported various sporting events, allowing us to have fundraisers there. So, if I'm even insulting anyone, I can't speak highly enough of moral compass and character. And what these guys try to do, and they make it feel like home for us, where you can go decompress after a hard day, talk to someone, someone that actually cares about you, and you know, give you back just as much love as you give them by choosing to come to their place of business. All right? Thank you.
Hi. I'm Trina Johnson. I reside at 31074 Homie Square, number 201, Beverly Hills, Michigan. I have been a patron from day one. I've been in this area for probably about 10 or 11 years. And to find a nice restaurant and bar was something I looked for, and I was recommended to that place. The food is great, and I kept coming. The service, the people were beautiful. At this point, 10 years later, Delon, Devon, his mom, all of them are like family to me. They've always treated me good. My son comes with me on Sundays. We watch the game. We eat. Sometimes I don't want to cook on Sunday, so that's the place that we go, because it's family-oriented and always have been. I'm also a part of one of the softball teams that Bar 7 has sponsored for nine years. Not that they have to, because they wanted to. And we've brought trophies to them. We've had good times. My team comes there after the games. I also bring my women's committee from my local. We have meetings there on Sundays. We have our meetings, say, "Hey, where do you want to go?" And most of them always want to come back to Bar 7 because of the environment, the way the people are treated. They love it. I love it. My mom doesn't go to bars. My sister had a birthday party there, and we were like, "Well, Mom, is that a bar? But it's a nice bar. You're going to love it." She can't love the bar. She's not a bar person. So, I'm just standing here to let you guys know, this is a good family. This is a good establishment. I have not been there where things have happened, the fighting and different things, because I'm not there that often. During the school year, I'm with my son in sports. The summer, I'm there all the time. So, I'm here just to support them and not to downplay the things that have happened because it's a tragedy. It shouldn't have happened, but this establishment should not be held for other people's actions. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Anna Rosa Song. Linda Albert.
I'm Nancy Smith. I live at 19570 Villa Drive South in Southfield, and I didn't really plan on speaking, but I feel very strongly about this. I moved to Southfield about 30 years ago, and I've been very happy here. It's a very progressive city, and I've seen a lot of improvements, but I cringe every time I hear about Bar 7 or read about it in the newspaper. And it makes me wonder whether this is really... I'm retired. I planned that this would be the last place I lived, and I really question whether I want to continue living here with something that is that violent. And I just can't believe that just changing the hours a little bit is going to really make a change. As long as you're serving alcohol, people have, you know, they lose their scruples, I guess. And... But I just, I don't think that an establishment like that should be in Southfield. It sounds as though the family is very nice, but I think they cannot control this clientele, and I think that is what is being... And I think it's just, you know, they had all these chances, and I think the time is up, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Quincy Gray. I'm the head chef of Bar 7. I stay in West Carney Park, 26697. And I just want to say, I've been working here for like eight years, and that's like the best place I've worked for. I got the best walls, you know, and everybody loved everybody. The whole job was like a family order, you know, and they... It's my first time, have to work with a lot of cooks and a lot of... They want to come to work, you know? I've been working in Southfield, 12 Mile, Evergreen, Round Shore, Mr. B. I've been all around Southfield. I love coming to Southfield. I moved out of Southfield about 18 years ago, and I just got here, and I love it. And everywhere I'm at, everybody asks for Bar 7. Everybody around my complex, "Bar 7, it's Bar 7 there." But they love Bar 7. Everybody loves Bar 7. And I go, "I'm in West Bloomfield. They ask for Bar 7." They love it. You know, they love the food. They love the customers. They love the employees. It's this friendly atmosphere, you know, and we can't... We can't... It's not our fault or something. It's not. And they do a shit shoot everywhere, everywhere. People in school shoot. We do that and shoot. You can't stop everything, you know? It is all about the people that comes in Southfield. I've been in Detroit. I've been there, Raleigh. Shoot. I've been in Detroit, I've been there, Roale, shoot, everywhere you go. But Bar Seven is this, is this the place everybody will go. They love to come here. They still come here, "You alright, you alright? My landlord, you alright?" Hey, I'm still there, I'm coming. Now, I know people, it's bad people come places, you know, you can't, you don't know who's bad, you don't know who's got this, you don't know who got that. You know, you just gotta just live life, you know, because this life is, this life is too short right now, you know. I'm eating off this job, my family off this job, my daughter, I rent my daughter off this job, my kids off this job, all they know is Bar Seven. They don't know, they don't know that, they know Bar Seven. You know, so I just want to say, thank you for the time, for letting me come and do this, and I just want to say, just come to Bar Seven, we got the best chef in Bar Seven.
Hello. My name is Fred Anderson. I've lived in Southfield for thirty-one years, almost thirty-two, and I'm happy to say that the neighbors on either side of me have been here longer than that. And we kind of made a pact, as long as things are good in Southfield, we stay here.
Could you give us your address?
A little closer? Okay. My address is 20248 Forest Wood. I'm also a president of Evergreen Woods Improvement Association, who represent fifty-five houses. And as I was saying, we made a pact, that as long as things are decent, and staying decent, we stay here. When things start to slide, let each other know when we need to go. And personally, I want to stay here. I want to stay here until I get ready to go. Now, I follow this in the newspapers, and I do not like it. I don't think it's safe, I don't think, you know, they may be a nice family, they may have a lot invested in the business, but all of that, good food and all that, I work my life. And I go to some of the businesses around here, and I tell you, now I look on my shoulder, and I think twice before going in there. And, you know, gentleman was talking about, you know, how nice the place was. I'm seventy-five years old, been to a lot of nice places, a lot of places I like, but they do not have shootings, stabbings, and that type of things in fights. Birmingham's footplaces, our business revoked their licenses because of similar incidences. I think we should too. Thank you. Thank you.
Your name and address, sir?
Counselor, my name is Harold Hill, 22300 Simole Street, Southfield, Michigan, and I've been for twenty-eight years, and I have been to Bar Seven, and they do have good food. I don't know about the chef, but they do have good food. I've been there before, and I'm kind of surprised at some of the incidents that's going on, you know. I mean, worried about that, but the remedies that I heard, I mean, I was at the council meeting, and they mentioned that, Trina Ward mentioned that as part of the deal, Bar Seven would play no rap music, no hip-hop music, should be played, but jazz is okay. I don't think it's the music. It's maybe clientele, but it's not the music that's going to sit back and change everything. I heard Police Chief Hawkins mention that there's some things that they're doing, and I hope they are, because if they do stay okay, they do need to change. They do need to change, because we love our Southfield, and I pray I don't stay there, I don't want anything running away, like a business, that we can take care of that. But I just have to complain about one thing. However, I did not hear about the limitations on anything like the rap, acid rock, rock music, R&B, or country music as a limitation. Those behaviors have caused problems too, and so that was a concern. It's kind of one sided restricted. It seems a little bit biased too. So I want to see things get better at the facility. I use the fact that, hopefully, they come to an agreement, and I know the police chief is involved, but that kind of stuff continues, maybe it's time to switch occasions. Okay?
My name is Abe, it's Warren Carter. My home is 20265 South Grooming South, Michigan. Good evening, councilman, councilwoman, good evening, residents of Southfield, mayor. After receiving this email, I sat for a few days to think about it, and I let my thoughts or my emotions affect my decision. My main concern is for everyone. I feel like with these compromises being made, there should be a probation period possibly for this restaurant. Not a complete dismissal of the restaurant, but if they adhere to the certain compromises you give, there should be a probation for them, and see if that works out. The two other compromises that I agree with, security is a must. The hours should stay the same, but the liquor hours should be put into effect, meaning any is at twelve p.m. The music, music should be more encompassing, more inviting to different people. The thirty-seven police runs, and the shootings and the stabbings. The owner should be in contact with the police, he should be used proactively, instead of being used with consequences. He should feel freely be able to contact the police proactively if he feels something is going to happen. And I don't feel as though calling the police should be used in consequence. And I believe these compromises, which I stated, will offset the cost. Keeping the hours open to two, or the no serving of liquor, more security, these will offset the cost, so you'll be able to pay for these things. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Hello, my name is Yolanda Haynes, 24501 Kinsel, in Southfield. I first came into contact with Bar Seven when I was coming from out of town, and it was a little late, it was twelve o'clock, and I stopped to get some pizza for my kids, because it was the first place after being on the road so long that I came to. Well, when I got to the door, I was stopped by this huge guy, two hands in front, "You can't come in." And I said, "What's the problem?" He said, "You got kids." I wasn't twelve o'clock, so, and I didn't know why, he says, "It's a bar," okay, but I didn't understand it, so I guess I wasn't welcome, because I had my kids, couldn't leave in the car, so, okay, is that kind of bar what happened? So next time I tried to come, it was a parking law issue. I didn't feel safe. It's one of those issues where you park, I park, you get my spot, might be some problem. I got back in my car, and I left, last time I've been here. Couple things. The last two places we had some problems with in this city have a bar behind them. That's an issue here, so we obviously have some problems with bars in our city. Now, the issue there too, to me, is it's in a place where most of the businesses close early, and it's also in a place where most of the businesses have ample parking. The parking is very exhausting there. And if you go around, it's dark, so that's a problem too. I feel like there's a possibility that we are stressing our police in a situation that we don't really have to, when we have places like this. Not against the bar, not against businesses, come to Southfield, but I think there's some things that we need to look at even moving forward, when having bars and places in our city, according to our standards, and according to respecting our residents. A family place is somewhere where you can bring your family at any time, not just the people that are there being a family. And we have a standard here in Southfield, and we don't want to be on national news with foolishness, and we don't even want to be on our local paper with foolishness, and we don't want to be labeled with foolishness of these sorts of things. And just like in my household, things get out of hand, I tighten up stuff. It's like, hey, this is not going to happen here. So if you're in management, and you see these things are happening, don't wait for somebody to come to you and say, "Hey, you need to tighten up your belt." You need to look at some things yourself and say, "Hey, we need to clean house. You got some screws in there, don't need to be in here, clean them out, whatever you got to do." But you got to watch that, because, you know, there are times when we invite these type of people, like my grandmother, she just said, I can't say a word, she said, I just put it like this, manure draws flies. So you got to watch that. And we got to watch that in our city. We want violent places that are growing, that are helping our city, and maybe location is a problem, but whatever you do, whatever you decide, I think it needs to be in regards to the citizens here, the people that pay taxes, the people that live around here, and also support the business of mainly the residents here, who want to stay here, who want to live here, and want to see places that we all can come to, or if we can't come to, we want to invite somebody, or we don't want those type of people in our neighborhood. Thank you.
My name is Leslie Ashford. I'm at 1515959 New Hampshire Street, Southfield. I've been a resident of Southfield for about eleven years. I didn't expect to stand and speak either, however, I feel it necessary to respond to the letter I also received from the mayor. The thing that caught me off guard was that, the rap music thing, and in our current climate of nationalism and anti-people of color, it's a very hostile environment that we're living in, and for somebody to say that's a solution to, in music that is typically identified with African-Americans, I have a problem with that, that's not a solution. And I'm very surprised that people can overlook that and say that that's okay, that I will continue to patronize you, even though you're coming up with a solution that's bigoted. That is my number one problem. Rap music, hip-hop, you know, there's places that play it that don't have violence. There are other bars in the city of Southfield that don't encounter these issues. So there is something wrong. I think that all too often in our country, the citizens, our voice is not heard. Big business, money seems to speak, lobbying seems to speak, and we're all just a bunch of weaklings in the United States right now. So I would like the council to take into consideration each and every citizen who lives here, who wants to stay here, who wants to raise their children and grandchildren. We have the power, okay? We are paying our taxes, and we love our city. People who are having businesses here that live elsewhere, they don't have to, they don't deal with property value issues. And I've also recently opened a brokerage here in the city, so property values are very important, and it's a serious business. They go up and they go down, it just takes a little bit to tip the scale. When you talk about the violence in our current climate in the United States, people want to run for safety. I don't, I don't want to see that happen to the city. It's got a long history, rich history, and we need to preserve it, and sometimes you break down the hammer, and I think that unfortunately, I hear everything and I understand, everything that the family is saying, I understand business, I love entrepreneurship. However, sometimes bad things happen to good people or good businesses. And as a community, I think we need to stand up and not sit here and say, "Business rules." I'm tired of that. We're individual Americans, residents of Southfield, and we want to keep our city a welcome and safe place, and I don't want our police force strapped with one location, okay? So that is my position. I'm sorry that it's a big challenge for the family, but we live here, and I'm sorry, I think the residents of Southfield trump on this issue.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Roger Zepinski. I live at 29961 Bermuda, North End City. And I think one thing that kind of summarized what several people have said, that in my feeling, image is everything. Southfield, image is everything for Costco. So, and so a lot of people that worked hard in my neighborhood, I know Mr. Lucas, I know a lot of my neighbors, image is everything. And I think because of that, if someone wants a quiet hamburger, and it be served politely, go to Mr. Joe's. You know, that seems like a good choice, straight down the street. But I think because of that image, and because of mistakes in management, the time is up.
My name is Timothy Owens. I live at 25586 St. James, Southfield, Michigan. I am a long timer, a patron of Bar Seven, as you can see. They support all the members of what we call our family. Died in a car accident four years ago, and we have, they support us with the annual golf outing to memorize it. All the things that we've been talking about as far as the music, the rap music does draw a peculiar problem, and that's what the rap music is about. It's not about the color, it's about the crowd that draws us. The parking issue, the parking is an issue everywhere, but they have ample parking. People just don't want to walk that far. I go in there, sometimes I have to park, wait farther than I want to. I go in, I say, "Hey, I got to just walk home." But they, I never felt uncomfortable in the bar, early in the day or late at night. I've been to a lot of other establishments where I've seen like, nobody mentions. Isn't this the Red Cross Street? At Friday's, which was a big incident. People shooting through windows. You don't have that kind of action. Nobody wants to mention all the things that happened to other bar institutions around here. They had people who wanted to do bad things, who would do bad things, you can't see them coming, just like at the school. They knew there was a problem with it, but they didn't see them coming. So I think they do their best, and I feel safe all the time. And I'm sure if you came in there, you'd feel safe and welcome.
Well, other speakers?
I frequently talk about something called the Southfield Standard, and what has taken place here.
Mr. Mayor, could you give us your name and address?
My name is... Sorry, Mr. President, my name is Kenson Seiger. I live at 18410 Magnolia Parkway. I'm a fifty-one year resident of the city of Southfield, and I've been in a life of office here for seventeen years. I frequently talk about something I call the Southfield Standard, what is appropriate for our community. The incidents that have happened at Bar Seven run in contrary, or contrary to what I think our residents expect in our city. They want safety, they want well-maintained city streets, as well as good city services. I do not feel that the things that occurred at Bar Seven are isolated incidents. There's been a pattern of violent behavior there. They have ignored the suggestions of the Southfield Police Department in the papers, and while it's all going good that they provide, have a family atmosphere, and they provide and support this and that, I'm looking at a bigger picture. Since these headlines were made, I've heard from scores of Southfield residents and businesses, and from people in neighboring communities. And I agree with the speaker who said, "It's all about image." Yes, some of these things happen in other places, and yes, Birmingham has closed the bars, Dearborn, Roale Oak has had similar situations. That doesn't mean that we have to allow this to continue here. Earlier this evening, or at the beginning of this proceeding, I put on your desk, and this came not as a suggestion from me, but rather from the City Center Advisory Board. City Center Advisory Board brought this up on their own accord, and for those who don't know what the City Center Advisory Board is, this is a body that is made up of leading real estate interests and businesses in Southfield, and they provide five cents per square foot, which amounts to hundreds of thousands of dollars for extra amenities in the city. Much of what you see on Evergreen Road, Civic Center Drive, Northwestern Highway, E2 to the Beat concerts, on and on, the things that they do are about promoting Southfield. On that board are some of the leading businesses, Dur, Eaton Corporation are members of that board, Lawrence Keck, a major stakeholder in our city, Showsec Brothers, Redco, Etkin, Etkin... Lawrence Keck, a major stakeholder in our city, Showsec Brothers, Redco, Atkins, Transwestern, which is the whole town center complex. And their unanimous opinion is that this liquor license should be revoked. They feel that all of the things that they have done to attract businesses, attract residents, to get people to invest in Southfield are undone by the headlines that this bar has generated with several shootings, bar brawls, and stadium. It is no secret that I personally feel as mayor, and I don't vote on this matter, but as mayor and as a resident, that enough is enough, and this liquor license should be pulled.
My name is Sarah Habo. My address is 29245 Marshall Street in Southfield. And honestly, if the city council is okay with giving Bar Seven a chance to continue under the recommendations and restrictions that the agreement that U.S. has sent out would include, I am strongly against the restrictions on the specific music type. I think it's really, it's unfair and difficult for the police to actually be able to practically enforce this. How would you be able to enforce whether hip-hop or rap is being played in the bar realistically, unless you have an officer sitting there? And are we going to count Taylor Swift with Kendrick Lamar as hip-hop? Or is that pop losing? I think it's really arbitrary. And I hate to say it this way, but I think we have to call things what they are. And it's racist. And I think we're trying to use other terms for it to be polite to one another. And we don't have to be polite about things like this. Rap and hip-hop music themselves aren't inherently violent. The people who listen to rap and hip-hop music aren't inherently violent. If you look across the board of the music types that I listen to, violence happens. And that's a bigger issue than just the type of music. The issues that we have involving violence are bigger than this one bar. And I don't know that the restrictions that are included may necessarily quell all of the violence, but it's impossible to stop violence. We've had 18 shootings in 2018 already, and we haven't even finished February, the shortest month of the year. So we have an issue of violence in this country. I don't think it's Bar Seven's fault. And I would support allowing them to continue to remain in the community and have their liquor license so long as they meet these restrictions. And if the restriction regarding the music is taken out completely, because that just to me seems arbitrary, and the impact that it would have would be racist. And honestly, I think it's going to get sued. So we don't want to waste city resources on something that's incredibly arbitrary and may not actually impact whether there is or isn't violence in the community. A lot of people like to be there. A lot of people like the environment. Someone said that it's 37 calls within 10 years. I mean, let's do math. That's not very many per year. You know, problems happen. If they're taking active steps, proactive steps to resolve the issues going forward, I understand the city council deciding to make that decision. I respect the city council and the people that are on there. And I think they would make a good decision. However, you go.
Public hearing is closed. You know, the speakers, seeing none of the public hearing is now closed. We would like to have the chief of police to make some comments relative to this.
Good evening, council. We ask that city clerk be known to the community. As you know, when these incidents first started occurring in our city, I was and still am as outraged as anybody about these incidents. So many people here today talk about the draining of the resources of the police department. And they're absolutely right. And just for correction, it wasn't 37 over 10 years. It was 37 incidents over a span of four years. And what we're seeing was that the incidents were increasing in frequency and in violence during the last two or three years. But I think you've got to back up a little bit, because I think the city attorney is going to talk a little bit about the process that we have to go through with this potential liquor license revocation and in reasons why this recommendation to allow them to continue under these, some of these conditions were made. And as House Knowles and as the city attorney I'm sure is going to explain to the, to our audience and our members of our community, the city council will be making a recommendation to the Liquor Control Commission for this to happen. So it seems that there's some maybe misunderstanding process tonight in thinking that the city council would actually be stripping the bar owners of the license, and that's not the actual process. And so, but going back, we looked at what was happening with the first shooting that they had. And what we found, and what I found from looking at some of the other incidents that we're seeing in our city, was that something was different in this place. We've got establishments that sell alcohol in all over our city, but we were not seeing the types of incidents with the types of violence that we were seeing at this particular location. So we needed to find out what was it about this place that was drawing this type of violence that was so different than anything else we were seeing? And what we found was that this, the atmosphere and the environment in this place was a lot different than what we were seeing in most of the other places that we have in our city. Fact of the matter is, they were drawing a crowd that was much different than what we were seeing in any place else. And I know some folks up here, some members of our community brought out the fact that, you know, that some of the things may have been race-based or bias-based. But the way I saw it was nothing like that. I saw it as individuals who were demonstrating bad, poor, violent behaviors. I didn't see color with this. We were seeing some bad behaviors from individuals in this place. And what we found is that they had, this was, this had, this was not a bar. It had turned into a nightclub. We basically had a nightclub right in the heart of our city. And that is not what was intended for that particular location. And this nightclub atmosphere was drawing individuals who wanted to come and to party, so to speak. They just didn't have the accommodations to handle that type of crowd. We have, nightclubs work in some places. We even got nightclubs in other cities. We have had some in our cities before. But if you're going to have a nightclub, you have to have a much different model, a security model, in order to accommodate that. So we saw this disconnect between their actual model and where they were trying to have this type of business. And so we got with them after the first shooting, and we gave some recommendations as to what could be done. And one of the recommendations was, you need to change the type of music that you play in your place if you want to survive. And you have to change security and some of those things. And it worked. It worked for a short period of time. And for whatever reason, they reverted back to that old model we had this other incident. And so now, we're back almost where we were a few years ago. And so council, what I think will work in this instance is for us, these conditions that have been laid out, that the bar owners have agreed to, in my professional opinion, I think that at this point, that's something that can work right now. We, for me, it's about the safety and security of our people in our city. It's about, do we have an establishment that will be a public nuisance, that will be a public safety hazard to the individuals who live, work, and play in our city? Under that old model that they had, absolutely, they would have been a public safety hazard to this city. What they have agreed to with this agreement, in my opinion, I think that they will be no more of a public safety hazard than any other establishment that we have in our city that sells alcohol. And as I've talked with the owner of the establishment before, he has the responsibility to have a model that does not attract individuals who want to come to our city and create chaos. My professional opinion, I think that by them adopting this new model, that we won't have those types of problems. And there's no heightened risk with those types of problems occurring in our city any more than there are any other places that we have. I'm willing to accept any questions that you ask.
Let's have the attorney make her comments again with their question.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the chief indicated, he had strong feelings about what kinds of things were occurring at this establishment that in his professional opinion, he thought was the connection, the nexus between the issues that were happening. And so based on that, and based on even before this agreement was even developed, the establishment changed their operations. And they sent out through social media pretty much these kind of, these kind of conditions to their customers, because I think they recognized that they had an extreme problem there and that they need to provide a safe establishment for their own customers as well as for the city and for our residents. So I think that is kind of the genesis of how this potential resolution of this issue was developed. Chief is absolutely right that it is the decision only of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. So whatever city council did here was purely a recommendation. Whether the Liquor Control Commission would agree or would say, "No, we think that we're going to let this establishment keep their license." I think the concern from the chief and our perspective was, then is the establishment free to just operate whatever way? Does this make sense for the city and for the residents of the city to have in effect that the items that the chief feels and the police department feels are so important for how this establishment should operate? And all this does, someone mentioned probation. In essence, that's what this is. If these terms and this compromise is not abided by by the establishment, the city specifically states in here that it'll move forward under the ordinance and move forward with the whole process. And so I think this doesn't give up that right. This preserves it. If we don't see that this establishment becomes safe for not only the customers but for the residents of the city, then the city has the same avenue to pursue that it has right now. And one thing I would say that I think we recognize, and I think exactly as the chief said, nobody saw color or race in these discussions of the type of music. It was a certain crowd that it was attracting. We did talk to the establishment through their attorney, and we have revised the wording. It no longer says, "No hip-hop, no rap." But what it says is that we need music that is focused and directed to more of an adult contemporary music. So that we are looking at things like jazz. Some rock is fine, but things that are more adult, mature, adult-oriented. And so the language that I think was bothersome, and I understand that, and that was never the intent, but that has been removed. And the concept that I think that the bar understands is that they're trying to get a much more mature type of customer base in there. And then the fact that they're closing at midnight, which I think was important for the chief also, because a lot of these incidents were in that late hour period where most people that are just going for a burger or beer, they're home because maybe they have obligations the next day. So I think that all in all, that the design of this potential resolution was to protect not only the customers but the residents of the city and protect the image of the city. And so with that, obviously, the council under the ordinance that you're pursuing this under, you do not have to make a decision tonight. You could, there is a provision in the ordinance that you have 60 days to make a decision. You could decide tonight that you want to adopt the proposed resolution. You could also indicate, you know, we're not satisfied. We may want to go forward with some type of communication with the Liquor Control Commission. If that is the decision of council, though, obviously, our ordinance requires us to go through a due process hearing with the bar and their establishment. They have an attorney. So I would request that if that's the line or that's the path that council desires to take, we really need to then just adjourn this hearing and go back to a full due process hearing, which is, gives the bar the opportunity to cross-examine the police department, anyone that wanted to testify against the operations of the bar. They would have the right to pursue and put on witnesses and introduce documents. And it would actually be almost a judicial process prior to the council making a recommendation to the Liquor Control Commission. So that's kind of where we are, and those are kind of some of the options that council has before tonight. Mr. Chilton?
Absolutely. You gave us another copy.
Yes.
Could you tell me what changes you made?
The change was, the change was on page two, section 1A. You will not see the words "rap" or "hip-hop" in terms of the music that is prohibited.
You need that slow.
Really?
Yeah, I'm looking for.
Page two, 1A. And it would be the second sentence that changed. So the requirement of no DJs or the light, that's still there. But this would now indicate that they have to play music which is focused upon and directed to a more mature audience consisting solely of jazz, Motown, rock, other similar mature adult contemporary music.
I just want to make sure that you cut the difference between you doing it and getting a chance to be.
The council last week agreed to this particular resolution to make based on our professional opinion of our police chief and our city attorney. As councilmen, as council people, we are relying on staff quite handily, but we are obviously not the experts. And all across the city, we have experts in every area of the operation of the city. So we did agree to this particular resolution with the understanding that if anything did go wrong or in and out of accordance with this, there will be swift action to make that correct, to correct those particular actions. And they did remove some of the triggers that they think was creating the undesirable conduct. And in doing so, the council at that particular session felt that our overall concern is the success of all our residents, the success of all our tenants, the success of all our proprietors and business owners. This resolution that we came to is a win-win for all those elements in the city of Southfield. And we rely on the, obviously, the professional opinion of our state. And that is one gigantic piece of information that we have to, in essence, take into consideration. And it's not necessarily emotions, but it has to be, you know, fact-based. And we have two learned professionals that have expressed their opinion to council. And I hate to say this, but if their opinions are not valid or proven wrong down the road, you know, obviously, their word to us in the future will be not, you know, taken very, it will be taken lightly. So with that, council, I will open up any other questions you may have.
Very good. One of the issues that they agreed with is to install cameras in the vest mule. And I'd like to know a little bit more about the kind of cameras that will be installed, including, and ask if cameras inside the establishment itself will be installed or unless they're already there. Are they recording that cameras or are they just still pictures? Will they be able to show activity that takes place so that if something happens, that you know how it got started? And how long will those pictures be retained so that cooler heads can, can analyze whatever data comes up out of the cameras?
My understanding, Councilman, was that obviously crime prevention and the police department works with people on those type of security measures and that that would be something that they can meet with the establishment and decide maybe the chief wants to weigh in, but that was my understanding of how it would work. And they, they could talk about specifically what type of cameras, just as you're indicating.
Okay. Because I've, I've seen things on television, you know, have you seen it personally? Looks like something they drew on Edson Kenner.
Sure.
Thanks.
Mr. Marsh?
Chief, I respect your opinion. I have a question. As it relates to the music, there's a lot of focus on the type of music, but I was wondering if there was any concern about the volume and how loud the music is played. Sometimes that kind of gets people riled up as well and is that, I didn't see that in here in the language too. I don't know if that's something that you want to consider, but in your opinion, is that an issue?
Yes, I think that's an issue also. Type of music, because they, they were drawing a, a crowd of individuals who had no respect for law and were demonstrating that. And a lot of it was tied to the type of music that they were playing. And volume definitely had something to do with it. But I think the type of music that they were playing at that place had just as much more to do with it as well.
Is that, is that, do you think the volume makes a difference? Is that something that you can add?
I, I would have no trouble adding that. It's just, it's a difficult standard. You know, what's too loud? Probably varies from one person to the other without being putting some kind of specific scientific calculation on, you know, what the audible level is. I think part of it, maybe that I would think, maybe the DJs with their systems, the speaker systems would probably be louder than what they're going to be able to transmit over just their normal system because DJs, at least in my experience, are typically louder.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. And, and I just want to add also, during this period of time, these last two and a half months or so, I've had officers in there doing, doing compliance checks and this folks probably didn't even know that they were there, had other officers in there monitoring the place and saying what the atmosphere has been like since they put these addresses into place. And what my officer is telling me is that it's a whole different environment. It's, it's totally different. We haven't had any cost or service at all at that place over the last two and a half months. I've heard anecdotally from people who have gone in there during this period of time since they've adopted these changes. And, and again, it's, it's more of a short crowd that's going in there.
Well, I, I had never been to Bar Seven before. I went there yesterday for lunch. The food was great. It was a really wonderful atmosphere and I really enjoyed it. But, you know, my duties are to serve, you know, residents and so I just have, you know, I'm inclined to, you know, support the agreement, but I also, you know, I feel strongly about this. I agree with the mayor that we really need to look at considering doing something, you know, in reference to, to, to this, to this operation.
Yes, and I also want to add too, that moving forward, that council adopts this, we will have frequent compliance checks of this, of this establishment. Not just this one, but all other establishments that we have across the city. And if there are any violations, if they stray at all from the, what's been agreed to with this, then it will be prompt, prompt action and prompt recording to council so that council can make the appropriate decisions whether or not the body wants to at that point go forward with a recommendation or a replication. But I will have my officers in there frequently doing compliance checks of the place.
Mr. Congressman?
Yeah. Let me start by saying that to everyone here and those who may be met this evening. And I've lived here almost all my life and I went to graduate from Southfield High School. Is my family here. I have my family still living here and I'll never sit here and tear the city apart. We have one of the most fantastic cities of any city in the state of Michigan. And one just has to sit back and learn a little bit about what this, this city does and the people who sit up here and the mayors and illegal. Every day they are short of staff, but they make everything work. And, and I sit here and I hear some of the people say, well, because of this, I don't know if I'm going to stay or not. I'm going to tell you that this is a safe city. It always has been a safe city. Incidents do happen. And, you know, I'm looking at the chief police and we've got one of the finest police departments in the entire state. I look at our, our chief Johnny. How many emergency runs did you have this year set a record?
Fourteen thousand three hundred.
Say a little louder.
Over fourteen thousand.
Yeah. I mean, nobody has. Lives that have been saved because the fire department has been there to help them out. This group started in nineteen seventy-two, the first ones in the United States to have anything like this program. You know, you look at the city administrator and the engineering, they had the largest construction season. How many, how many miles of roads have you been this year, this year ahead of anybody in the county?
How many miles?
Yeah, we do, new, new construction. How many millions of dollars?
Oh, we're maybe going to count for the last two years, about thirty-four million last year. Yeah, forty-four million.
These sort of these things, we just have to get out to the city. Everyone who knows what the city is about, and I'm sure that those who spoke know what the city is, and I'm very, very proud of each and every day and it's a safe city. You know, incidents will happen. I remember way back when, when AMC had a shooting, Star had a shooting, what was it? Red Lobster had a shooting. I mean, these things happen. These things happen. We open up the paper and see what happens in other cities. You know, I mean, here you had a safe city, Parkland, right down in the heart of Florida. You know, they have one of the top ten cities in the country as far as safety. You know, you can sit back and say, but you won't have the incidents. We will. But how we deal with it, and we don't have to have a hearing to deal with it. We have professional people up here that sit here each and every day and see all these situations come before them and they deal with them. And they bring these things to the city council and mayor when they come up and ask us to help them resolve these issues. The chief was just before us, Monday, was it Monday night? And telling us about what he proposed to do in this situation. And, you know, each and every time that we have to address a situation like this or any other situation, we deal with it. And we don't, you know, get our, in the public, we go ahead and get the job done. And it can be the apartments that are having problems, you don't sit back and not take care of it. Administrator is right on top and building department's on top of it. I mean, we are seeing these situations in the city and we deal with them. You know, and I think, I think the people in this city have to know it. I'd be very, very proud every day they wake up that we have the city that I believe deals with everything. Service is beyond anybody's belief. And if you don't believe it, you know, get into the city and see what they do each and every day and all the money we spend in, in behalf of our residents and businesses. And how many businesses at Big Southfield, they're the center of it all, to come here? We have a thirty-two million dollar building being built over the nation eleven mile road. You know, thirty-two million. And they keep coming. Why? Because they know that city of Southfield is a great city, it's the center of it all, has easy access to the airports, has easy access to downtown Detroit, anywhere they want to go. The center of southeast Michigan population today is at Northwest and I-696. We have highways that traverse through our community and, and many, many people not only come here to work and to live, but thousands and thousands of people come through our community. And you don't hear anything negative about it. We take care of their accidents. We take care of their children. We take care of their homes. We take care of their businesses. I'd be proud of the city of Southfield.
Yes. There were a lot of comments made by residents, many comments by patrons of Bar Seven, although I'm not confused if it's Bar Southern or Southern Bar and Grill. But, you know, I just want to comment on some of the things that, that were said. You know, it was mentioned, you know, that Fridays had a few incidences. And I know that in those, in that situation, our, our police chief went over there, talked to them and the behavior changed. I know that before we got to this point with Bar Seven, that our chief went and spoke with owners of, of Bar Seven and things changed. As I mentioned, they kind of reverted back to where, to, to the situation that we now find ourselves in. I don't necessarily think that taking away a bar's liquor license when they are putting in writing versus verbally saying something, but if they're putting in writing changes that they're going to make to how they operate their business, I think shows that, that shows the city, shows the residents, our police chief and those officers that are responding to these issues, that they're serious about changing their ways. That being said, you know, when, when the chief made a recommendation that we have a hearing to potentially ask the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to take away the license, there, there are a couple of things that he pointed out and I want to make sure that, I, I'm pretty sure that the bar owners have seen this, but I want to make sure that they really understand what, why residents are so upset. There were, I think the number changed, but thirty-two incidences in the last four years. I don't know if we were thirty-seven, thirty-two, but over thirty issues. Many of them happened in the parking lot, some happened in the entranceway to the bar. Some involved gunfire, some inflicted serious bodily harm on patrons. And part of the issue is that things have escalated in the last two years. I think now that the bar sees that we are being, we're serious about how their patrons are, for whatever reason, the, their patrons are acting the way they are, I think is something that this, as, as a council member, I consider the fact that they're willing to put in writing that they're going to change their style, they're going to, they're going to cut operating hours. They're hiring different, as the, as the agreement says, appropriately trained professional security, that they are making changes to how they act. It says a lot about what, that they're serious and that they know that the city is serious about these, these issues that are, are occurring. I've been told by residents, I've been told by former residents, people who have never even lived in Southfield, that they've heard about some of these issues. I believe Councilman Farcasi mentioned that there were issues at the, at the Star Theater that, that there were shootings there. You mentioned Fridays. There had, there are issues and they are usually not sporadic, they're not frequent. And we do have a very highly trained professional police department that responds to the issues and works with residents, with, with the business owners, the business community to try to prevent those issues from happening in the first place. And when they start happening, work to try and stop those from continuing. And, and I think that the changes that are being proposed, and this is not something that the city went out, this is something that the bar owners came to the city and said, we want, we want to stay here. We don't want to lose our, potentially lose our license. We will make these changes. This is not something that the city went out and asked for. And I think that that's, that's something that's saying that they, they're being serious. The bar owner, when, when he spoke, he mentioned, you know, there were seven, eight years of no issues, no problems and then something happened. You know, whether it was, I don't know if they had a DJ the whole time or that's something that added, but, you know, hopefully we can go back to those seven to eight years of, of no issues. And as the chief mentioned, his officers have been there, plainclothes, walking through looking to see that things are being upheld to what his recommendations are. I mentioned this to our city attorney the other, the other night when we were discussing this and I, I want to bring it up again about when alcohol is served. In the agreement, it says no alcohol, liquor, beer or wine shall be sold or served after twelve o'clock midnight as that's the closing hour. And all patrons and customers will be off the premises no later than twelve-thirty. So I guess my question is, you know, similar to baseball where they stop serving alcohol at the seventh, after the seventh inning. Why, why does the agreement not have a fifteen or thirty minute prior to them closing, last call versus we'll stop serving alcohol right at closing? I understand that patrons may stick around a little bit, linger, finish whatever their discussions are at their, their dinner, but I was just wondering why there's no last call prior to them closing up shop?
So I think that the, the intent was that last call would be, you know, quarter to midnight, ten to midnight, that's your, that's your last call as opposed to two o'clock or so, which would, you know, be typical. So they would make that last call, somebody could be served, so if somebody said, I, you know, yeah, I want the beer, they could serve that as long as it was before midnight. The person then has fifteen, twenty minutes, finish up their beer and everyone's got to be out by twelve-thirty. I mean, I think that's kind of how this was envisioned to work. So I do see a last call. I just think the last call is going to be probably, and I, and I don't know, maybe you could even ask the operator, if, if last call's approximately, you know, eleven forty-five, that means then, that gives them fifteen minutes to serve that drink and then the person's got to finish up and be on their feet out the door by twelve-thirty at the, at the latest.
Would, would you care to?
Yeah. Yes. 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 Since we adopted the closing at midnight, we have to do a last call at eleven forty-five. Lights go on at eleven fifty and right around midnight, our security announces that we are closed and it's time to eat. But like you said, people continue their conversations, wrap up their meal, cash out their tab, use the restroom one last time. But by twelve-ten, twelve-fifteen, my security is, since we've adopted this, is usually locking the front door with only staff left in the establishment. So since the last two months, I haven't, we haven't had any issues with getting the alcohol to get served after midnight. I'm not very sure policy would be enforced. But yeah, so about fifteen minutes before midnight, eleven forty-five is when our staff will do their last rounds, announce to the customers that this is their last opportunity to grab a cocktail or a beer. And at eleven fifty, the lights go on signaling that it's time to go. At twelve o'clock, security will then announce that it's, the establishment is closed and escort whoever's remaining out of the building and lock the front door.
So I guess to make me feel better... So I guess to make me feel better, is that, is that something that you would potentially be willing to add into the, to that, add a sentence to that?
Yeah, sure. We have no problem with that. We've already been enforcing it as of right now, so it wouldn't cause any problems for us.
So you'd like to see something that eleven forty-five is last call?
Eleven fifty, lights go up, and then at twelve o'clock, they announce they're.
Sure.
They're closing. Okay?
Stay the procedure in place now, we have no problem agreeing with it. My favor.
And then another question I had, I know the chief mentioned is that you have different security personnel.
Correct.
Do your, are they, you know, are they identifiable?
Yes, they're wearing a Bar 7 t-shirt. It does not say security on it, but they are staff members at the front door. They make themselves known immediately when someone walks in with either a greeting or if it's after a certain time, especially on the weekends, we enforce pat downs, stuff that I would be discussing with the chief of police moving forward as far as certain procedures go, with pat downs, searches, legalities of certain things there. But he is at the front door at all times, after eight o'clock. So he's at his post, right when you walk in, he's the first person you see. He will greet you if he feels like he needs a patting down, he will, and obviously checking IDs of anyone who may look underage. So he's the first person a customer will see when they walk in the establishment.
And how many security guards do you have?
Right now, because we're trying to create just a relaxed environment and we're, you know, not overpacking the place, it's not as rowdy, we just have our one guy at the door right now. We've only seen about forty-five, fifty patrons in the place at one time. With a relaxed environment, it's definitely sufficient at this time. If we see an increase in volume of customers in there at one time, we will add additional security. He has a full staff, but as of right now, he feels comfortable, in his professional opinion, that he can handle it if there were to be an incident. We don't allow large groups of people in there anymore. We don't do reservations, birthday parties, we've never done bottle service, we've never done any of those things. But since we don't, it kind of helps create a environment where it's not large groups of people that he may have to contain at one time, something where it happened. So that's the process right now. With one security guard at the door, if we do continue to, you know, the volume of business picks up over time, we will be adding additional security at certain locations in the bar.
And the security guard is different than what you had previously?
Correct. We have a security team for eight years prior. He is a completely different security guard, completely different security team. He seems more well-trained, he executes pat downs, he seems a little more professional than my previous team. My previous team may have gotten a little too comfortable dealing with the same patrons over the last eight years, knowing everybody by name. Our crowd is very regular, blade-based clientele, so you can see the same people all the time, which may result in a little bit of comfort, which may have been a reason why certain things may have happened. But my new security team seems to be a lot more on top of things. We've seen, we've got positive feedback from customers, old and newer, that have come in, have definitely shed light on the improvements as far as the security.
A couple more.
Sure.
I'm assuming that our fire marshal has gone in and has done, prior to opening a count of how many patrons are allowed at one time?
Sure.
Do you know what that number is off there?
Yeah, our capacity is seventy-five people. That's how many, we have, I believe, sixty actual chairs for people to sit between the dining area and the actual bar. And there's just a little bit of standing room that we would overflow if we were to reach capacity. But at this point, we're actually being a little stricter, especially on the weekends, Friday and Saturday, in light of all the recent events and us trying to rebrand and restore our image, of just kind of keeping it around fifty-five, sixty people fill in the actual chairs and kind of get away from the standing room. People kind of standing around looking over at people, it seems to give me, could something cause a problem.
And I think my last comment to the question is, I hope you heard that, what the residents of the city have had, you know, had to say, their thoughts about what is taking place in your establishment, and hopefully this will also be another reminder about, you know, what we're looking for in the city as the Southfield standard.
Definitely. We've, I, the lay-in coming up, I didn't want to be the first person to speak, I wanted to hear from a lot of people before I came up. We completely understand the position you have had to take, the police units had to take. We are looking to, you know, have an open line of communication with the city council, with the police department moving forward. We do not plan on backing down from this agreement, going back to old ways. We want, the perception and the reality of it, you know, you saw from some of our patrons who are actually in there, kind of see the reality of what we are, rather than the perception that you may hear on the news or get from maybe outsiders who haven't come. So we want to have that reality be our perception, where everybody understands that this is a community place for the locals of Southfield, the cheers of Southfield, which we always were for the longest period of time. I wanted to address your camera issue just because you had brought it up. Well, we do, we did get a quote, we have twelve cameras already existing in the establishment. The quality is average to below average. We are upgrading to 4K cameras, ultra HD, as well as adding the 4K camera in the vestibule as well, just to clarify that for you as well.
Are, I believe you also questioned, are they, they're recording capable?
Yeah, they're on a DVR. You get two and a half weeks of recording, so if an incident does happen, you can capture it. It has happened in the past where we've helped the police department. They come in right away with their USB in and capture whatever timeframe they need to, and it saves forever for them. But they have, we have, we have a couple week window where we can capture anything that may, either an incident has happened or something suspicious that they may need to look at.
Thank you.
A proper thank you.
To the city attorney though, this resolution that we are considering, will be filed with the Liquor Control Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it will. Number one, because we've already had sent a communication, we sent the resolution that council adopted back in December, as well as a letter that was executed by the mayor. And so I think it's appropriate that this be a part of that package so that the Liquor Control Commission will understand where the city council is, what restrictions that they agreed to operate under. And so I think if, if in fact, the establishment does not abide by those, it seems very reasonable then for the Liquor Control Commission to expect something from the council to say, you know, hey, this was the agreement and they didn't follow it.
Thank you.
All right. As I've stated before, as council and as a city, by, we have numerous constituencies, the tenants, homeowners, and businesses, and we are, want everyone to be successful in their own right. And with respect to what went on tonight, I think we have addressed some of the triggers that created bad behavior. And I think the chief and the city attorney indicated that we'll be swift to action if we see an uptick in anything that is detrimental to the state of Southfield, to the Southfield image and prompting back in the state of Southfield. So with respect to that, council can I give a motion to accept this resolution with the amendment spoken?
Put it in, Mr. President.
The one that Councilman Monalva suggested?
Oh, okay. Mr. President?
Mr. Monalva?
We could certainly add something, I assume that that would be a problem, to indicate that the volume will be, will not be excessively loud, we'll put something in there that affects the music?
Yeah, appropriate volume, not excessive.
With the background that we have a professional police chief and a professional police force that has recommended that this agreement is something that he can live with and his force can live with, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this resolution for Bar 7 and ask for it to be passed.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Move by Mr. Frazier, seconded by Mr. Focasi, that we approve the resolution presented with the amendments. Council, your vote, please. Can we get a roll call amendment?
Focasi?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Monalva?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Resolution passed, amendment approved.
It was passed. With that, I think we can end this session and begin with the drawing. Thank you.